All right, welcome to the organizational meeting of 2024. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We like to start with the oath of office for our newly elected board members, Jim Detsel and Nancy Slattery.
Jim?
I'll time it, okay.
Nancy, go first.
I thought you were going to do a joint thing.
No.
I say to my.
I'm Nancy Slattery.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
The duties of member of the Board of Education.
The duties of member of Board of Education.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified. Thank you.
I say to my.
Hi, Jim Detsel.
I do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will perform faithfully.
And I will perform faithfully.
The duties of member of the Board of Education.
The duties of member of Board of Education.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
In accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
Until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified. Thank you.
All right, so now we can do roll call.
Mrs. Talby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detsel?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mrs. Slattery?
Here.
I'll wait. So we need a motion and a second to approve the agenda for this meeting.
So moved, second.
All right, passes five to zero. And so first thing is to call for nominations for the election of president for the Board of Education for year 2024.
Nominate, oh, sorry, I'm nominating the call.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second.
So moved, second.
Or was that, that was, yeah, okay, no, I'm sorry. Passes four to zero. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Talby. Do hereby affirm. Do hereby affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. That I will perform faithfully. That I will perform faithfully. Duties of president. The duties of president. Of the Board of Education. Of the Board of Education. Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio. Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. And in accordance. And in accordance. With the laws now in effect. With the laws now in effect. Hereafter to be enacted. Hereafter to be enacted. During my continuance in said office. During my continuance in said office. And until my successor. And until my successor is elected and qualified. Is elected and qualified.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so we need a nomination for the Vice President.
Nominate Mark.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
All right, so for the election, we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Can I second that?
You can.
Okay, thank you. Wow, we know how you feel about yourself. It passes five to zero. All right. I can't help myself, so.
There you can. You can return it there.
Yep.
I'm Mark Gilbert.
Do hereby affirm.
Do hereby affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will, I will perform faithfully.
I will perform faithfully.
Duties of Vice President.
Duties of Vice President.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
Of the Northwest Local School District in Hamilton County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance.
In accordance.
With the laws now in effect.
The laws now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And until my successor.
And until my successor.
Is elected and qualified.
Is elected and qualified.
All right, so we now need to establish time and place for board meetings. The regular meetings for calendar year 2024 will be held on the dates, times, and locations that we've all reviewed. Need a motion and a second.
So moved, second.
Okay, that passes five to zero. And so now we need a nomination and a point for the Student Achievement Liaison.
Nominate Nancy Slattery.
Anyone second?
Second, second.
All right, that passes four to zero. And we need to nominate Legislative Liaison.
I nominate Chris Heather. Second that.
Passes four to zero. So we need to recognize the following board attorneys, Dinsmore, Finney Law, and Ennison Britton. And I need a motion and a second to recognize the board of attorneys.
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero. And we need to approve our OSBA membership dues for 2024 is $9,368.
So moved, second.
And we need to... Let's see, the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, so the Northwest Local... What? Yeah? The Northwest Local School Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other boards of education to obtain favorable judicial decisions and where the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund has been established for this purpose. Therefore, we hereby resolve to participate in the OSBA for calendar year 2024 and authorize to pay the $250.
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero. We need to establish the Board Service Fund. So set aside each year for the general fund for a sum not to exceed $2 for every child enrolled in the district or $20,000, whichever is greater. Need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Okay, that passes five to zero. And authorization, authorize the President and the Treasurer to be the official signers for payments of funds for the board and further authorizes that one signed check on all Board of Education accounts and that the President's signature and the Treasurer's may be of the same. Need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Okay, that passes five to zero. The Board of Education authorizes the Treasurer to pay bills as they are presented within availability of funds and report all bills paid monthly to the board and to include bills not paid due to unavailability of funds. Need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
That passes five to zero. The Board authorizes the Treasurer to invest in active and interim funds at the most productive interest rate and according to board policy, whenever inactive and interim funds are available. The Board authorizes the Treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in either of the following: commercial paper notes issued by a for-profit corporation, business trust, or association; real estate investment trust, common law, unincorporated business, or general limited partnership which has assets exceeding $500 million. Need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All right, that passes five to zero. A designee for public records training, a member of the board or designee must receive three hours of public records training for each term in office. The Board designates Elizabeth Witt for training on behalf of the Board for the current term of office. Need a motion and a second to approve?
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero. The Board must designate a representative to serve on the Tax Incentive Review Councils for Hamilton, Green, and Corrin Township. The Board designates Amy Wells or Elizabeth Witt.
So moved, second.
It's not showing.
There's no vote.
Yeah, there's no vote. Try again.
It's going so smoothly.
It was. Let's try again. Well, that's not the right one, sorry, let me go back.
There we go.
Well, it's not the right one, though.
Oh, it's not.
Here we go, it should be...
Think we skipped one.
Hold on. Trying to get back to it. That was the public records. It's showing. Mm-hmm. But there's no vote on our screens. But it, when I...
It's not letting us vote.
Yeah.
A roll call.
Okay.
Mrs. Talby?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Detsel?
Hi.
Mr. Heather?
Hi.
Mrs. Slattery?
Yes.
And that was for the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Yes.
Okay, so we authorize the student activity accounts to be active for fiscal years '24 and '25. I need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero. And we need to appoint, appoint the Superintendent to be the sign-off officer of all student activity programs, and he shall present these programs to the Board once each year. He will also have the authority to approve and/or modify the student activity budgets throughout the year. I need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Okay, that passes five to zero. We need to approve board member benefits. That's for, goes through monthly premium Anthem HDHP, and rates are per month and may change per plan year from January through December. So I need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All right, that passes five to zero. Records are being presented for recognition and will be submitted for approval to destroy through the Historical Society as reviewed by the Records Commission. I recommend that we recognize the records that were listed to be as part of our retention plan. Need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
That passes five to zero.
I'd like to ask the Board to set the blanket certifications at $25,000, to approve the resolutions of blanket certifications as listed.
Need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, that passes five to zero.
Next, annually, we do a transfer for transportation to our athletic funds. So I'd like to ask the Board to approve the transfer to our three male schools and two high schools for a total of $60,000. So the Treasurer recommends that the Board of Education approve the annual fund-to-fund transfer as listed.
Need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero.
Finally, we need to present and report out our rebate and reward programs. So I'd like the Board to accept the PNC Purchasing Card rebate for $13,718. We have a FIS Integrated Payables rebate of $14,280, our Southwest Ohio EPC rebates of Purchasing Consortium for $24,242, and our Kruger Rewards, we do not utilize the points, but we do get the savings when individuals in the district go to purchase items. With that, I ask the Board to accept the rebates and rewards as listed.
Need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
That passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Then for the appointment of the purchasing agent, the Board would authorize the Director for Business Services as by designee to serve as a purchasing agent for the district. The Superintendent recommends the Board approve the appointment of purchasing agent as listed.
Need a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
All right, that passes five to zero.
Then this is the recognition of our booster and support organizations, our PTAs, and the document list does show the compliance in terms of policy, bless you, in terms of which support organizations are in compliance and which ones are not. The ones who are in compliance will be granted their status for the full year. The others are a six-month extension. We'll continue to work with them to make sure that the documents are brought in to be in compliance, and then the rest of them will be approved in the June meeting. With that, the Superintendent recommends the Board recognize the booster and support organizations as listed.
Motion and a second?
So moved. So moved. Second.
That passes five to zero. All right, that brings us to adjourning this organizational meeting. I need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All right, that passes five to zero. Call the... This meeting, our tax budget hearing meeting, to order, please. Amy, would you take roll call?
Mrs. Talby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detsel?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mrs. Slattery?
Here.
All right, I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, that passes five to zero.
So for our tax budget, annually, we prepare a modified tax budget. Most of the public entities are on a calendar year, and we operate on a fiscal year, so our new year doesn't start until July. So there's a requirement by law to have a tax budget so that the county can understand what tax mileage to collect. But they have school districts present a modified tax budget, which just includes our tax collection funds. So our general fund, our debt service fund, and our permanent improvement fund are part of our tax budget. For our general fund, we include the five-year forecast, which was just approved in November. And then for our debt service fund, we include our debt payments, so our principal and interest payments for our master facility Phase One bonds. And then for our PI fund, there's a two-mil collection, so we actually presented them also with our capital maintenance plan that we have prepared. And so that's what we submitted, or will submit with the budget, and that's what's included in the budget that was attached for review. So if there's any questions on the actual tax budget?
Any questions?
Nope.
So with that, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the tax budget as listed.
I need a second, please?
Second.
All right, that is approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. And I need a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved. Second.
Okay, that passes five to zero. And our regular board meeting will start at 6:30. All right. Good evening again. Let's rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Talby?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detsel?
Here.
Mr. Heather?
Here.
Mrs. Slattery?
Here.
I'd like to read our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And I need a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, that passes five to zero.
And before we actually get into the content of the... And before we actually get into the content of tonight's agenda, we do want to take a moment and pause and recognize that in December, we did lose one of our transportation employees. It was Victoria Stewart, who had been employed with the district since 2019 as a driver, and she passed in December. And over break, unfortunately, we had a second passing in our school community. Angela Bausch, who was a substitute teacher and had been with the district as a substitute for 20-plus years, and primarily at Strublon, was a fixture there, was lost over winter break. So our community has suffered two losses that we want to take a moment and acknowledge. And Nicole, you wanted to lead in a moment of silence.
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment of silence for them, as well as to offer up prayers for the teacher who was a victim of the events this week at Corrine. Thank you.
And then tonight, we start with a special recognition. January is always the school board recognition month from Ohio School Board Association, so I'd like Lindsay Creasy to come up and lead us in a recognition of our school board members.
Good evening, everyone. As Daryl said, January is our school board recognition month, and it's our time to celebrate our hard-working board members and to thank each one of you all for the dedication that you all have to our students as well as to our schools. So Nicole Talby, Mark Gilbert, Jim Detsel, Chris Heather, and our newest board member, Nancy Slattery, thank you so much. Thank you for your dedication to our students. Over the past year, a lot of things have been done, and a lot of things have been accomplished, and so it's with much appreciation that we say thank you. Every year, our board, as you all know, dedicates a book to our school libraries to encourage our students to continue their love for reading. And so you'll see in the very front here, we have a display of books to our... In our preschool, the book Dozens of Donuts by Carrie Finneson was donated. Dog Man by Dave Pilkey will be donated to all of the elementary schools. A First Time for Everything by Dan Santat will be donated to the middle schools. And then at the high school, Dreier's English and Utterly Correct Guide to Clarity and Style by Benjamin Dreier will be dedicated. And so inside each one of the books is a bookmark that has been designed by each one of our elementary students that are laminated and very beautiful. So we really want to take a moment to present each of you all with a certificate of appreciation and to also read your bio. And while we do that, we'll have Mr. Yader, as well as Ms. Wells, come down, and they're going to be giving you all your certificate, as well as your bag and your flower. We'll also ask Mr. Garing to come up front, and he's going to be our official photographer. Alright, so when I call you all's name, I'm going to ask you to stand while I read your bio, and I want you all to show me some grace, because there's a lot to read tonight. First, we'll have Nicole Talby. Nicole was elected to the Board of Education in November of 2021. She grew up in White Oak and currently lives in Corrine Township. Nicole and her husband, Tom, are Corrine High School class graduates of 1997 and have three boys. Carson, age 19, a freshman studying education and playing baseball at Mount St. Joseph University. Austin, who's 14, an eighth grader at Corrine Middle, and Blake, age 9, a third grader at Corrine Elementary. Nicole has worked with Ameritas as a senior data scientist on the IT data and analytics team for the past 25 years. At Ameritas, Nicole has helped lead their community involvement council for over 20 years, coordinating volunteering events through the community. Nicole and Tom attend White Oak Christian Church, where Nicole enjoys volunteering in the preschool area. She enjoys watching her boys play sports, as well as playing volleyball and softball, traveling with her family for many camping trips throughout the year. Nicole is passionate about community involvement and volunteering. She's looking forward to giving back to our district and continuing to make Northwest a desirable district where our students will thrive and be prepared for their future. Nicole is excited to continue building relationships with our amazing staff and connecting with families in our district. Please join me in showing thanks to Ms. Talby. And we'll have you come on down. Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Mark Gilbert. Mark was elected to the Board of Education in November of 2017. He's a lifelong Corrine Township community member. Mark has been employed in the medical field for over 30 years, where he now works as the Regional Director of Steel Valley Radiology. He is a graduate of the University of Cincinnati, where he studied and graduated in radiology. Mark has been married to his wife, Tia, for 32 years, and they have two children. Tia is employed with the Veterans Hospital as an RN. Their son, Brandon, 27, and a class... Corrine class graduate of 2015, earned his master's degree in 2019 from the University of Cincinnati. Hannah, who's 20, graduated from Corrine High School in 2022. Hannah is currently in her second year at the University of Cincinnati, studying to be a middle school educator. Mark is most proud of their community engagement and mission work they participate in around the world. The Gilberts attend White Oak Christian Church, where they participate in many functions within the church, as well as participate in the missions around the world. Mark is proud of the impact Northwest Local School District has had on his children. He firmly believes it takes a village to provide for most of our children. It is his desire to repay that impact in his role as a board member. His desire is to improve community awareness of the inner workings of the district. Please join me in showing your thanks to Mr. Mark Gilbert. Big smiles. Wait, 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 I'm sorry. Can we have Mr. Gilbert heard this whole certificate? I'm sorry. Photo optics. Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Jim Detsel. Jim Detsel was re-elected in November of 2019 for his fourth term on the school board. He continues to serve as the Butler Tech Board Representative from Northwest Local School District. He serves on the Board Development and Effectiveness Committee in the Legislative Committee at Butler Tech. He thoroughly enjoys his work on both boards, and one of his goals is to increase the number of students from our district to enroll in the Butler Tech programs. Butler Tech continues to expand their facilities, including new construction beginning in the summer of '21 at the Natural Science Center. The opportunities for our students are endless. We have so many partnerships with West Chester Hospital, giving students a jumpstart on their careers while they're still in high school. Jim continues to serve on additional district committees, including the Building and Negotiation Committees. He is the recipient, or was the recipient, of the Warren Stevens Award. This is awarded by the Ohio School Board Association for Outstanding Board Members from a neighboring district. Jim Detsel has been the owner of Detsel Insurance Agency since 1979. He's married to his wife, Pam, and they have three daughters, Ashley, Brittany, and Lindsay. She must be cool. She's got an awesome name. They also have three grandsons, Jacob, Gavin, and Cooper, and welcomed their first granddaughter, Kemper Joe, in May. Jim is a graduate of Northwest High School, class of 1978. Mr. Detsel volunteered as a coach for 13 years at Corrine High School, coaching track and cross-country. He enjoys the time he spends getting to know all of the district kids, and he also enjoys watching all sports and is a huge Florida Gator fan. Please join me in showing your appreciation and thanks to Mr. Jim Detsel. Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Chris Heather. Chris returns to the Northwest Board of Education after a four-year break, having served three prior terms, being first elected in 2001. He's a graduate of Corrine High School, class of 1974, and attended Monford Heights Elementary and remembers when the driveway at Sam's Club was a farm, and when he and his classmates would pet horses during recess. Chris is a strong advocate of career technical education, as there are so many good-paying opportunities today for plumbers, carpenters, and other tradespeople. Chris is the only current board member who resides in Greentownship. He has a bachelor's degree from UC and a doctorate in nursing from Case Western Reserve University in Cleveland. He is the owner slash medical director of the River City Mood Disorder Clinic in Fort Thomas, Kentucky. He served as the captain of the USAF Reserve Aero Medical Evacuation Unit. He has worked the message board at Corrine High School football games for many years, coached and umpired for the Northwest Board of Recreation, and is active with the AmVets Post 1988 in Monford Heights. He is a licensed private pilot, and he is also soloed in helicopters. Additionally, he's a Civil War historian, having worked two summers while in college at the Petersburg National Battlefield in Virginia. Most proudly, he's only missed three home UC football games in the last 40 years. He has a nephew and two nieces who graduated from Corrine High School in the early 2000s, Phil, Stephanie, and Diana Heather. Please join me in showing your thanks and appreciation to Mr. Chris Heather. Say cheese. Last but never least, we have Nancy Slattery. Nancy was born and raised in Springfield Township. She is the youngest of 10 children. Her parents instilled in their children a love of God and family. They encouraged each of their children to follow their dreams and value education. They were advocates of personal responsibility, a strong work ethic, and a belief that all things are possible with God. With this strong parental guidance, Nancy was able to forge her path forward. She graduated from McCully High School in 1984. She then went on to earn her Bachelor of Science degree in biology from Catholic University of America in 1988. She then attended the Ohio State University College of Medicine, where she graduated in 1993. Nancy went on to pursue her internship and residency in internal medicine, also at Ohio State, which she completed in 1996. She then returned to Cincinnati, where she began her employment with the Christ Hospital as a primary care physician, where she... where the majority of her career has been. Nancy values education and believes that every child should receive an excellent education in a safe environment. Education is a partnership between the family, the student, and the professional educators. For a student to reach their full potential, all parts need to work together. There needs to be a mutual respect. The family is the building block of society in a child's first educator. Parental rights are respected. Discipline and respect of others start in the family unit. Where families are involved in a child's education, the child receives a higher level. Nancy's parents were involved in the education of their children and set the example for Nancy as a parent. Nancy has one daughter, who is now a high school senior. Nancy was involved with her daughter's education as a Girl Scout troop leader from K through 5. She was also involved in Everyone Counts program. She assisted in various classroom/school activities by either volunteering at the event or sending in needed supplies. She volunteered at sporting events and national titles in which her daughter participated, and she worked at open house at her daughter's high school. She also assisted the high school theater department by painting sets, selling tickets, and selling flowers, and she's contributed to school fundraisers. Nancy is a member of Lola Parish. She enjoys reading, walking her dogs, spending time with family, and making crafts. She's involved in volunteering activities from RSVP to Vantage. For this organization, she has made birthday bags and greeting cards for senior citizens. Nancy desires to be an advocate for students and to represent taxpayers. She will strive to serve the NWLSD to the best of her ability and to make the district a high-performing, fiscally responsible entity. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Nancy Slattery to our board. And if you all could join me, please, let's give one big round of applause to our board members. I'd like to take just one minute to also thank our Corrine High School and Northwest High School students and teachers, as well as our elementary schools, who made the bookmarks, but our... And you all will notice inside of your bags that our high school students actually made you all door hangers that say "Come in and go out." They have been painted and drawn on in various ways. They're very creative and very beautiful, and so we always appreciate when we have student artwork. We hope you all enjoy.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you. Moving on, we don't have anything, I believe, for student achievement liaison report this month? Or just this meeting coming back?
Not tonight.
Okay. Alright, any Butler Tech updates?
No, we have our organizational meeting on the 16th, so our next meeting, I'll have some comments then.
Alright, great, thank you. Any legislative updates, Chris?
Just one thing here, Nicole. On December the 13th, the Ohio Senate passed Senate Bill 168, and this is to address the shortage of school teachers in Ohio. And what it does is pretty revolutionary in the sense that if a person is a graduate of an accredited university with a master's degree in a specific area where they can take a test to prove their knowledge, they can become teachers with a five-year temporary certificate without going through Teachers College and student teaching. It did pass the Senate. It has not passed the House yet, but we'll keep you posted on it. But there is a big shortage of teachers, and I think this is a step in first direction, a right direction to help take care of that problem. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have reports from employee organization?
Yeah, tonight, we actually have Christina McCarron, who is the president of the local union for our Transportation Department, who is here, and she's going to talk, and I believe she's brought some people, including maybe Yolanda, the Transportation Supervisor, to talk about transportation from the perspective of the employee.
Awesome.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. I would just like to take a moment to tell the board about our groovy new cameras that we have installed on all of our school buses now. We now have the ability to record the license plates of any drivers who run our stop signs, which makes every bus driver very happy. Excuse me. There has been a wonderful transformation in our Transportation Department this school year. Morale is so much better. Now bus drivers are not stressing over canceling routes every week. We are able to serve the community much better. We have been working with administrators about student discipline, which is another wonderful tool that our cameras assist with. And a big shout-out to our supervisors. Yolanda, Tanya, and Brian are doing a fantastic job with hiring new people, and Susan is helping with that also, leave her out. Along with the regular duties and driving buses most days. So they definitely have a wonderful job, and very hard job, that they're doing a wonderful job at. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here.
I'm Ms. Grace. I was hired this year as a bus driver. I had no con- I had no concept of bus driving. I did not anticipate to be a bus driver in my life. And I have, so everything is new. And I don't know if you guys have ever driven buses, but if you haven't, you might not appreciate as much as I appreciate the things I'm gonna say. I have gotten to experience working hard with a bunch of wonderful people. So, I'm a parent, and I have kids in the high school, middle school, Butler Tech, and elementary school, Corrine, all the way down. And so, I get to experience the transportation department as a parent and as a bus driver. Honestly, it's me that's making my kid 40 minutes late because I'm doing the extra routes to doing it, and I'm the one picking him up going, "Mom, where have you been?" And I can tell you exactly where I've been. It's just not here. And I get to come up, and the staff are exceptional. The people that meet me on the sidewalk from the different schools, wonderful. The people on the radio helping us do all of the navigating across buses, across schools, wonderful. And one of the things that has been particularly great for me is the transportation department itself. I don't know if you guys have ever met our trainers. They are really wonderful. And our department is so much, it is really a bunch of wonderful people, and it's just a solid group. And I really love showing up for work each day to see what sort of wonderful things are gonna be happening with the people and, of course, with the students that I also get to enjoy so much. So, as a parent and as a bus driver, I just am grateful for this chance to talk about a little bit of my perspective on, yes, wow, and good job. Thank you.
Well, I'm Yolanda Palmer, the transportation supervisor, and I just wanna highlight a few of the positive things that has happened this school year. We know last year was a different kind of year, and definitely, we're in a different year this year. So, last year, or let me go back a couple of years. If we look at the school year '21 through '22, we started off with 70 bus routes. '22, '23, we were down to 66 bus routes. '23, '24, school year, the year that we're in now, we started off with 58 bus routes, which means that was an eight-route reduction from last year to this year. And that's because of the help of Tanya, Brian, myself, and the supporting software team, or supporting software company that we use to help support us throughout the summer to make these reductions, which resulted in us doing less cancellations this school year. Less. I'm sure everybody's happy about that. The drivers, the community, teachers, schools, everybody. '21, '22, at the end of the first quarter, we had canceled 279 routes. '22, '23, we canceled 320 routes at the end of the first semester. And as of today, we have canceled 28 routes. So, I think the hard work of the supervisors, as well as the support of our drivers, has made a significant change in what we have done this school year in order for us to move forward. So, we can provide transportation, so the students can come to school and get the education that we need. And I feel like all the changes that we have done has caused us, or I'll say, we are rolling and our wheels are turning in the right direction. No pun intended. But we're moving in the right direction, and we just wanna continue to exuberate positivity. And I feel like our team together, that we're moving forward, and we will continue to support our community and provide customer service as we are hired to do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda, what was the number you said last year, first semester? Because you had...
320 routes were canceled by the end of the first semester. 279 '21, '22 year, and just 28 as of today.
Good job.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you because I know everybody is so quick. Last year was really ugly. Everybody was so quick to come at you with anything you did could not have been done right to a parent that was, you know, their bus was late or the routes were changed. But, so, I just wanna thank you. I know you don't get probably a lot of thank yous from parents that, "Hey, thanks for my bus today." But they're very quick to be negative about it. But please know that you guys are all appreciated, and just thank you for being there. And I hope that discipline has gotten better because that was one of the biggest things that we had heard in the cameras, I think is huge. Just any stress relief that can be taken off of you guys is awesome. So, thank you all. We really appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I have one quick question for our newest bus driver. So, what inspired you to become a bus driver?
I actually, when I put in my application, Mark, I was gonna do anything. I was like, I could be a great secretary. I could do this, I could do that. Well, I clicked buttons, Mark. I clicked buttons, and one of the buttons I clicked was "Bus Driver." And they were very happy. No, I was like, I could be a bus driver. I'd be a good bus driver. And I am. I'm a fantastic bus driver. And I interviewed with Chris, and we had a great time, and the interview was super fun. I got the job. So...
Thank you.
I believe Susan bragged about that.
I did.
Yeah. She goes, "I love this candidate that came in. Energy..."
I wanna thank Christina for bringing a team to kinda talk about and highlight some of the things that are happening in transportation. And Christina said something that I don't wanna gloss over around the stop-arm camera and the license plate readers because it is illegal to pass buses when they are stopped picking up and dropping off kids. And I wanna commemorate, I wanna really celebrate our partnership with our police department as well because right now, in the state of Ohio, it is not an offense that they can be ticketed for to do that. But because we have the stop-arm cameras and can identify who is illegally passing, our police department, Corrine Township Police, is making individual stops at houses when people do that and reminding them that they cannot do that. And we are continuing to advocate at the state level that that becomes an offense that can be ticketed and fined significantly to ensure safety for our kids. So, Christina, you glossed over that, and I wanna make sure we called that out because that's an important thing, that people follow the laws around the buses.
Do our parents fill out any sort of agreement at the beginning of the school year around bus behavior for parents and students like we do?
Yeah, it's in the code of conduct for, it's in the same code of conduct for student behavior, and it's around buses. And this year, we've had our administrators and deans of students who have been boarding buses on a weekly basis and reminding kids about expectations. I'm trying to continue to support our drivers.
Okay. Thank you. And for community comments, we have one, Melinda Gatzweiler. And just a reminder that during the community comments part, you can address the board, but we cannot answer questions during that, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melinda Gatzweiler. I was with the school district for over 30 years. I was not ready to retire. I did last week. However, I do not feel safe in the school buildings. There are students in the building that are disrespectful, don't follow rules, leave the classroom without permission, running down the hall screaming profanity, threatening students' staff. There are also students with mental health problems. There doesn't seem to be any accountability for their actions. For instance, I was told with one student there was nothing that could be done because mom would not sign off for her to go to a more appropriate school. If she is expelled, then mom would have to deal with her. There needs to be higher standards set and higher expectations for students. It is not fair to the students who are there to get an education. Not fair to the teachers who are there to educate them. Too much time is spent on discipline by the teachers. Start suspending and, for extreme cases, expelling. The no-child-left-behind act is a failure. The students that are being left behind are the students who actually want to be there to get an education. They can't because of all the disruptions every day. If you want the state scores, the scores to look better, teachers need to be able to teach and not discipline. The sale unit has been taken away. That class did work. I've seen some of my former students working out in the community. They remembered being in that class and that had helped them. It has been changed to cross-category. Cross-category does not work. I've talked to the previous principals several times over the years and showed proof it does not work. There are students who can read and comprehend, although at a lower level, to kids who do not even know the alphabet or their numbers. They are expected to be taught the same curriculum. Then you have a couple of behavior kids. There is no learning in that situation. It is the same for general education classes, except they have no aides in the room to help them. Students are not getting the education they deserve. Three years ago, while in the sale unit, the teacher was out for about four and a half months. I was unaware that it had already been changed to cross-category. Therefore, there was a mixture of students in the room. The teacher kept assuring me that the kids who couldn't read would be moved to a lower class, and behavior kids would be moved also. When the teacher was out, there was no one to replace him, not even the administrators. We didn't even get a head poked in the door to see if we were okay. We were not okay. I begged for help, cried for help. Head meetings, the solution, I was moved to another room. My deciding factor to retire now and not even wait until the end of the school year was because of a student who had been identified with mental health issues. He had went after a student and almost went over the railing from the second floor. He came back to school, got in trouble again, was in the ALP room. He tore that room up, threw a four-by-four wooden tables and chairs. He is coming back at the end of the month. Why are you knowingly putting students and staff in harm's way when he is a danger at school? The pay is horrible. I'm about poverty, I was about poverty level. New positions for my type of job are posted up to $25 an hour. How can that be? I was told many times that I was at the highest pay scale. I'm not even close to that pay rate. We are not giving the knowledge or skills to prepare our kids for the real world. We've gotten so far away from the core academics that we used to teach. Now, it is counseling, psychology, breaking up fights, et cetera. Education is not coming first. So, in closing, I feel along with other people that something bad is going to happen, not if, but when. I hope not, but I do not want to be there when it does. I'm not here, I am not talking here tonight to make myself feel better. I could have just retired and went on my merry way. I'm here for the students without a voice and staff who fear if they say anything, there would be repercussions against them. And I hope the board members take my concerns seriously and look at improving the discipline in this district. Thank you for your time.
Next up, the superintendent's consent items.
We'll start tonight with human resources.
We seek approval for the following: four resignations, four retirements, one employee who passed away, four initial appointments, various supplemental items, and one job abandonment.
We have two vendor contracts tonight. Northwest High School music accompaniment and Corrine High School choral program clinician.
And then we also have our policy updates that were last month for information, this month for approval. The superintendent recommends the board approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
Sumoed.
Second.
Any questions? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we have to dispense with reading of and approve the special work session minutes from December the 7th and our regular meeting minutes from December 11th. With that, I ask the board to approve the minutes as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
Sumoed.
Second.
Any questions? Pass this five to zero. Thanks, Amy.
Okay, just a couple of follow-ups for things that have been mentioned in the meeting. We are incredibly saddened by the incident at Corrine High School that resulted in a staff member and a student being transported to the hospital. We express heartfelt concern for our staff member and our wish for her speedy recovery. We reiterate our commitment and our responsibility to ensure a safe learning and work environment. We seriously take and keep the health and safety in staff of our students, and our staff is a top priority. I know everyone would like more information and details about what happened. However, we are bound by confidentiality laws that prevent us from discussing the details. Violent or disruptive behavior of this type or any kind is not condoned, and appropriate and proportional disciplinary action will be taken, provided due process has been required of our student. We are respecting the privacy of our staff member and appreciate the concern and support shown by the entire community. I'd also like to take a moment and just thank our transportation department, who came tonight. I know they get up very early, and their routes roll before most people are out of bed. So, I know this is staying up late for you, and we appreciate that you came tonight and shared some of the positive things that are happening in your department and the way things are turning around. So, we appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, board comments. Chris?
Thank you, Nicole. Just, first of all, I wanted to welcome again Nancy to the board. Welcome back to gym. Congratulations to Mark and Nicole for their reelection to the board officers. Yolanda, thank you for coming tonight with your, I don't remember your name, ma'am, but with an attitude like yours, how could the busing department be anything but a great success? You know, very much noticed and appreciated. Okay, thank you, and that's it.
I just want a second. The transportation department really appreciate the hard work that you guys do and the changes in the last couple of years because it's been needed, and we haven't really had many calls from the community so far.
Hesitate even.
But let's, yeah. But thanks for the hard work that you guys do, day in and day out. And just wanted to welcome Nancy to the board. Congratulations, and that's it.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the transportation presentation, and I think the new bus driver should be on the Facebook ads, giving an ad for it. She should be the poster child for the transportation department because that would make anybody wanna go and drive a bus. I also would say very heartfelt sorrow for the incident that happened last Friday. I think it really makes us know we need to look at our priorities. We need to protect our teachers and our students. And I've been praying every day since that happened for the Northwest School District. And I hope we can turn this around because nobody needs to be in that environment, the people who were harmed, or the other kids that witnessed that. It's gonna scar them, and we need to change that.
Thank you for the transportation department. We have a spot on our agenda for every meeting for our different departments that can come and speak and brag and share and do everything. I've known Yolanda for a very long time. She drove my daughter to the third grade, I think. I think you had her. And there were times I'd call Daryl and say, "Did Yolanda show up for work today?" Because like, it was heated. Like, you guys were under the gauntlet. And, you know, the fact that you show up every day is impressive, and the dedication, I wanna thank you for that. And welcome to Nancy. She's gonna be a great asset for our board, and clearly, she's very heartfelt, so, what we need. And that's it.
I wanna welcome Nancy as well, and just, I couldn't say any better what she just said about what we need to do moving forward and just how sorry we are for everything that's happened. Thank you to Christina, Grace, and Yolanda and their team that's here. Just, we really appreciate you as parents. I think the cameras are gonna be a huge asset in anything that makes you guys feel safer every day in doing your job. Also, I'd like to thank Melinda for your years of service, and thank you for being here and speaking. And that is all. Thank you. We need a motion in a second. We will move into executive session.
Yeah, so the board will go into executive session to consider employment or discipline of a public employee and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations of state statutes. Superintendent recommends the board approve the motion to go into executive session as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
Sumoed.
Yeah. I pass this five to zero. And just a reminder, we will move into executive session, and when we return, it will be to adjourn the meeting. No further business will be discussed. Thank you.